Hopefully this meeting will be able to be further.
Chris Ross.
Yeah.
Don't mean.
It's so exhausting.
Thank you.
It's. It's like a.
Yeah. Hopefully this meeting will be able to be further.
Chris Ross.
Yeah.
Yeah. Don't mean. It's still exhausted.
Thank you.
It's. I saw. Yeah. I'm speaking behind this. And. Then it's. It's like a. No, I can't. Yes. I mean. And then just just know. So they look. So looking for my. And the. They're going to. Now. And now the. Next class. And there's. Not left of the. It's gonna be so much. I don't have some new faces. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
And then.
New planning mission. How like this is a new word, but he's been on their. Their catch lines. The. Or just roll.
Yes. Uh. I think. Your. Thank you. But yes. It's. So. Yeah. And I'm saying. This is very. So those exactly. I hadn't done this at the age of at least two percent. Next. Thanks. I think. It's. Yes. Something. So I feel. She was. And you really did. But and now it's coming. If you become more. Are they? It was that. Like the things. Yeah. That's. What's. Person. Oh. Ken, right? You're. Here. They used to say you haven't met your. Like. Yeah. This guy. I was in place. I'm taking a very enough. Honestly, I'm. First. Yes. Yes. So. So. I ask all the question. I think it comes back to second.
Look at that timing. Perfect.
At least time here.
That's like. Uh. I have. Yeah. You know.
All right, everybody, we're gonna go ahead and call the August twelfth, twenty twenty five. A meeting of the Dunwoody Planning Commission to Order. It is very shortly after six P M. Uh, at this time, we will go ahead and begin the proceedings with roll call. We'll start to my right.
Alex Wallach.
Jackie Edmondson. Elizabeth Shen.
Thomas O'Brien.
Scott Brown.
Deb Cameron.
Jeff Moss.
All right. Here we are. Seeing. I'm gonna back away from this a little bit, get some feedback.
Oh, man. We should have heard this. But get it.
Well, I'll. I'll. I'll speak louder and further away, and that seems to kind of make it go away a little bit.
We need to have a quick. In the. That's. That's how we.
Well, then I will. I will sit here and look sullen. Okay, I'm gonna keep talking. That sounds a little better. Right? Okay. We good? All right, very, very good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, was just going to remark very quickly on the roll call. There is a new name. To my far left, we have Commissioner Moss. Uh, who's joined our body replacing Commissioner Gordon. So, uh, welcome. We're glad to have you here. Uh, first order of business tonight is, uh, the approval of the July eighth, twenty twenty five minutes. As everybody had an adequate opportunity to take a look at the minutes and, uh. If they have, is there anybody who would care to, uh, make a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
All right, Mr. Cameron moves that we approve as written. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brown seconds. We got a motion and a second at this time. Is there any debate? All right, then. Time for a vote. All in favor? Raise your hand. All opposed? Like sign. Uh, Commissioner Walt, did you? I didn't see. Did we do? Was that in favor?
Yes.
All right, very good. All right, so that's, uh, that's unanimous, and, uh, we are pushing forward. All right. Uh, do we have any organizational and procedural items to, uh, to discuss tonight? Excellent. All right. Given our last couple of meetings, we are really sailing through the agenda. So, uh. Uh, we will now look at unfinished business. Uh, first one is item two, R Z twenty five dash oh five and slept twenty five dash oh four. Uh, the eighty-four perimeter center east request for, uh. Major modification of the zoning and special land use permit conditions, uh, of cases R Z twenty three oh two and slept twenty three oh three. To modify existing zoning conditions, update the site plan and include hotel and owner occupied condominiums as allowed uses. As well as a special land use permit for a drive-through restaurant. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, and I just realized as you read that out, I think I might have. Made a mistake on the agenda. The applicant has removed their request, um, to, um. For additional uses, the hotel and condominium uses, just to clarify that. Um. So, um. Since the last meeting, um, the applicant, um, has proposed to modify their existing conditions. Update the site plan. And still include the special land use permit for the drive-through. Um, they're no longer asking to change the uses in the fourteen-story building. That request has been removed. Um. The rezoning still needs to be updated by nature of the site plan being updated, though. Um, so just to clarify that. Um, this is just a little slide. Pretty much everything from the last proposal remains the same, except for those two items. Um, that building is now proposed to remain as fifty-five plus, which it was already approved, um, for, um, as part of the previous rezoning. Um. Just a case update. Um. So the applicant has, um, met with staff multiple times since the last, um, uh, meeting. They've provided a more detailed site plan. Um, we've updated the conditions to reflect some of the changes to the plan. Um, and they've also ameliorated our concerns regarding the phasing plan. Um. And the applicant submitted an updated application, which is part of this package. Um, this new package did, um. Remove the previous elevations. The applicant does expect to have new applications for the drive-through, um, at a later date. Um, but they're not available right now for this meeting. Um. Just as a comparison, this is the old site plan. This is the new site plan. Um, the new new site plan. So this is updated from when you last saw it. It has more detail. Um, it shows the streetscape, so you can get a better idea of how those buildings interact with the streetscape. Um. And you get a better idea of the, uh, greenscape versus the hardscape. Um. The phasing plan does remain the same. Um, the meeting that staff had, um, with, um, the applicant. Um, we did discuss the possibility of, you know, what does it look like to add additional levels of parking on top of an existing parking deck? Um, and the, uh, contractor for the parking deck did confirm that it was possible. Um, but that the parking deck initially needed to be constructed to support additional stories on top of it. And so. Based on that discussion, um, we have amended one of the, um. Conditions, um, if you all choose to approve it, um, that condition requires that the. Initial three levels of the parking deck be built to support additional levels of parking plus a minimum number of residential stories above that. Um, phase two remains the same. Um. Overall, um, you know. Given this updated information, um, you know, and, and being able to have a more detailed site plan. Um, you know. Overall, um. The nature of this application, it really is focused on the drive-through use. That's what's driving a lot of the change and the updates to the site plan. Um, so that's really the, what we focused on, um, in our analysis. Um, for the drive-through use specifically, um. We don't feel that the drive-through use is appropriate along Ashford Dunwoody Road. Um, it's along, you know, our major corridor in the perimeter center. Um, you know, it's right across the street from some, you know, envisioned improvements to the area, including new programmed green space. It's part of what's called a city node in our Edge City two point O visioning document. Um, this is definitely more of an urban node. Um. Or a more dense node that, um. You know, we just don't feel that, uh, a drive-through use fits within, um. Overall, the updated design and layout of the buildings is a significant aesthetic and functional departure from what was previously approved. Um. One thing we did want to note was that the new configuration of the buildings does result in a lower trip generation due to the reduction in retail square footage. Um, so, you know, the reduction in traffic is not, uh, by nature of necessarily, um. It's just due to the nature of the new proposal and it being, you know, sm- slightly smaller footprint, slightly smaller retail, um, proposed. Um, but overall, uh, staff does not recommend approval of the special land use permit for, um, the drive-through. Um, and as a result, um, we don't recommend approval of the updated site plan. Um, we see those as very tied together. Um, should you all choose to approve the, um, reasoning and special land use permit, we do have recommended conditions. Um, I'll walk you through the ones that are most pertinent. Most of these are gonna be carried over from the previous, um, approved rezoning. Um, but down there at the end, we have three, or excuse me, um. Four new zoning conditions, um, proposed, you know, as part of the specific request. Um, again, one of them is that that parking deck be built to support additional stories on top of it. Um, one, um, regarding just the phasing of that construction and, you know, ensuring that proper entrances are open or remain open during construction. Um, the third, um, again, is related to that phasing, um, essentially saying that no certificate of occupancy um, will be issued until the three-story parking garage is complete. Um, and then the fourth condition, um, relates to a comment that was brought up at a previous meeting. Um, our, um, Public Works Department has been working on the redesign for the perimeter center east. Um. And, um, they have requested that we include a condition that the applicant construct a mini roundabout as part of this project. Um, you know, according to Public Works, a mini roundabout is, you know, uh, an actual sort of more technical term. Um, the final location and design of that mini roundabout would be subject to the approval of the Public Works Director. Um, we don't have a design in hand for that right now, but that could be handled at, um, you know, an L D P stage, you know, the, the permitting stage. Um, so overall, um. That is the update on this case. Um, I understand the applicant has, um. A presentation to give, just summarizing those changes as well, so I'll go ahead and pull that up.
Got it.
It's up and down.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Din Webb, eleven oh five West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh nine, here on behalf of the applicant, J S J Perimeter. Before beginning, let me introduce John Di Giovanni. John is a principal with J S J, uh, and just so you know, J S J owns this property. Uh. I've got some slides here that will help facilitate this conversation. The first one is just an aerial of, uh. The site in question, you can see it marked with the eighty-four. I'll zoom in on it a little bit, but this is two point eight seven acres. It's. As you know, it's in the southeast quadrant of perimeter center east, master Dunwoody Road. It's zone P C two today and is in the perimeter center character area. And as you can tell from this image. Uh, and I'm, I'm sure you know from experience, having driven by it a million times, there's an old bank building on this property with a, a drive-through and a big, uh. Asphalt parking lot. Uh. Madeline talked a little bit about the current entitlement. I'm gonna echo some of the comments she said, uh, as well. Uh, as you heard, this property is known for a significant mixed use, and I'll just take you through it quickly. Of course, along Asher Dunwoody and perimeter center east is the P C I D required streetscape. But moving left to right on this page, the, the building that you see in sort of a brownish color is retail space. The proposal is that for that is forty thousand square feet in a two-story building with an option to go to a third story. Uh, moving to the right towards the rear, you'll see a circular surface parked and driveway area. There are thirteen spaces in that. Uh, portion of the site, uh, as well as a valet parking stand. Uh, what you see in blue is a fourteen-story apartment building, and there is a condition on the original approval that that apartment building include eighty percent senior occupancy. And behind that, uh, building to the south is a parking deck. There are five hundred and four spaces, uh, in that deck, so it's a rather significant parking deck. Along perimeter center east, you'll notice two curb cuts, the one to the west, which is basically in the middle of the site, is a right in, right out. And the one to, uh, the east, which Madeline was just referring to, is a full access, a curb cut. And interestingly, as part of, uh, the original approval, there's some roadway improvements that go along with this development. Number one. Uh, the applicant is required to donate twenty thousand dollars to the city to help extend the left, southbound left turn lane off from Asher Dunwoody onto perimeter center east. And, uh, is also required to install a, a crosswalk with a pedestrian refuge in it. Uh, those are part of the original entitlement. They're certainly part of the entitlement we're here to talk about tonight. I think some of you have heard some of this story, but the fact is, this property was entitled four years ago. And every single day for the last four years, John is and his team have been trying to market it. Uh, and there was significant interest in the retail component of this. They had nine letters of intent from restaurant users right off the bat. But what they have had difficult, difficulty attracting is anyone interested in a fourteen-story senior tower in the city of Dunwoody. There is simply no funding for that type of use now. There's no, uh, funding, uh, really for the foreseeable future. So for this reason, this project has floundered for a number of years. Uh, and we have an opportunity now, and we're really excited about it. And I know we're, uh, we've spent a lot of time, as you've heard with staff, and trying to get the details right, because we understand this is a, a hot-button issue, uh, in the city. We talked a little bit about this last time I was here, but the. There is a, a restaurant called Portillo's, uh, and I know at least one of you has been to Portillo's. Uh, it is a, a famous name in the Midwest. It's a famous name in Chicago. It's actually a name associated with the city. And it's known for Italian beef and Italian sausage and other Midwest fare, but it's also known for sort of the atmosphere, right? It's, it's a loud, fun, boisterous place that would be very unique in the city of Dunwoody. And they want to come here and build a flagship location. And I've got a couple of images. These are, we've got, I've got a conceptual elevation of the building. And again, as you heard, uh, Portillo's is still working on some additional details, and I've got some images from inside as well, but I. If, for, if nothing else, I think it gives you a sense for the place. So this is the elevation, again, a conceptual design of the, the design of the front of the building. Uh, and these are some images from inside actual Portillo's restaurants, and you can kind of get a sense for the energy and activity there. You see the open kitchen and. You know, a lot of, uh, different design elements in these images. So. As you heard, we're really here for two reasons, but the main one relates to the special land use permit. Uh. Like most fast casual restaurants since the pandemic. Uh, Portillo's, in addition to having a sit-down sort of family-style restaurant, is requiring a drive-through component, and. I want to emphasize the fact, this is not a typical drive-through, right? This is not like a McDonald's or Burger King or, or a typical fast food drive-through. In my mind, this is more akin to a curbside pickup, and I'll explain why. Number one, there is no drive-through window here. You don't pick up your food through a window. If you pull into, uh, the facility during, uh, dinner or, or lunch hours, there are folks in the parking lot with iPads who will take your order and they'll send it into the kitchen. And you wait, and someone walks out a door with a bag in hand and hands it to you through the window, and you leave when you get the food. You don't wait in, you know, you don't have to get your food in the order in which you, the, the, uh, your order was received. You get it when it's ready and you pull away. Uh, so that's certainly one difference between what we're proposing here in a typical drive-through restaurant. I think. Equally important, if not more importantly, is the volume of traffic through this curbside pickup is a lot lower than what you find in a typical fast food restaurant. We put some data in our, uh, statement of intent. But Portillo's estimates that thirty to forty percent of its business will come through the curbside element. You compare that to a Chick-fil-A, which is about eighty percent. Compare it to, you know. You name it. Burger King, McDonald's, they're all sixty to eighty percent. So the volume of traffic coming through this, uh, curbside pickup is a lot lower. And I. This is really where we spend a lot of time. As Madeline mentioned, we've met with staff a lot. We've been working on this for a long time. Because we understand that there are goals in the perimeter center character area, right? And, you know. Drive-through or curbside pickup can be inconsistent with those, but I think they can be made consistent here, and that's what we've tried to do. Everything related to the curbside pickup will be handling, will be handled on the east side of the building in the parking lot. If you're sitting on, in your car on Asher Dunwoody Road, if you're standing on the sidewalk, all you're gonna see is a sixteen hundred square foot outdoor patio, a forty-seven hundred square foot restaurant, and that's it. What's happening in, in, in the curbside will be happening out, out of view, uh, to the east. So, uh, uh, that's certainly an important element. Uh, we don't want people to see anything from, from perimeter center, uh, east either. And I'll talk a little bit more about this, uh, in a minute, but if you'll notice. One of the changes to this site plan is we've added a park along perimeter center east, and I actually have an image. It's just conceptual as well to show you what we're thinking. Oops. Well, I may need some technical help. I'm seeing me stuck. There we go. Thank you. The intent of this park is to create a green space, but on the backside of the green space between our buildings and the right of way will be a wall. Right? Again, to add to the screening, to shield what is happening on the property from the right of way. And the idea is that wall could have a mural. It could be planted. There are a lot of things that we could do with it. But again, it goes with the idea of trying to hide what's happening on the property, again, to sort of support the ultimate goals of the perimeter center character area. And I think the biggest thing we've done to support it is not adding a curb cut on Asher Dunwoody Road, is going back, uh, to the original entitlement. The two access points are, are approved already. Will be the two access points for what we're proposing here. So there will be no cars crossing over, uh, directly from Asher Dunwoody Road into the site. They will not disrupt this, the look of the streetscape, and they certainly won't disrupt pedestrian flow, uh, you know, along those sidewalks. The second element is a little bit easier, uh, to explain, and I think Madeline did a good job of it, but we need a major modification, really just to, to replace the old site plan with the new. So what you see in front of you is a new site plan. From our perspective, it is very similar to what is already approved. Uh. But it needs some changes for the Portillo's element. But again, just to kind of quickly compare this to what, uh, is entitled now. Again, we have the P C I D streetscape along with perimeter center east and Nashville Dunwoody, and I have street elevations. I submitted them with the application. I could show you those now if you want to see them, but I think you're probably familiar with, with the code requires. Again, moving from west to east, you'll see the retail space on the west side, just like it is under the current entitlement. The biggest difference is, instead of one forty thousand square foot building, we have two buildings now. So the Portillo's restaurant, again, is about forty-seven hundred square feet with a sixteen hundred square foot outdoor patio. It's proposed to be one story, but the facade will be two. So it's gonna look like a two-story building from the outside. On the corner of Asher Dunwoody Road and perimeter center east is a two-story retail building, and the total square footage of the retail is about sixteen thousand square feet now. So we've gone from forty thousand square feet to sixteen thousand square feet. But maintain generally the look of a solid retail facade along Asher Dunwoody Road. Um. You know, the surface parking that we talked a, a little bit about earlier is in generally the same place. It's a little bit bigger than what we had before. We had thirteen spaces under the current entitlement. We have thirty-three under this proposed plan, but as staff says in its report. Thirty-three spaces on this property on the surface are allowed as a right. So there's really not much of a dispute over that particular issue. Uh, you'll notice the multifamily buildings in essentially the same place. The parking deck's basically in the same place. Uh, you know, we've got a similar landscape and hardscape-type scenario. Uh, you know, I've already talked about the curb cuts, uh, but there's one, I think, pretty major enhancement that, uh, Madeline also touched on. Which is this. Public Works wants a mini roundabout coming out of this site, right? That, we, we've heard about traffic. There was concern about, you know, traffic coming in and out of the site, and my response has always been. We're already entitled for way more than we're asking for here. You know, we're asking for less than half of the, the retail space that this site is, is entitled for. Uh, we're skinning up some of the other elements too. So the traffic generation proposed under this proposal is less than what this property is entitled for now, but we're operating with the same curb cuts. The city still wanted to see a mini roundabout on the far east side of our development, uh, where there's a full access, uh, uh, turning movement, and we agree to that. So again, that would be an improvement for not just folks coming on and off our site, but I think on perimeter center in general, so. Uh. I think I may stop there. I'm sure there are plenty of questions, and I'd like to get to those, but I'll reserve whatever time I have. And again. I've been doing this a long time, and one of the first places I ever worked at was in Dunwoody. So I, I know, uh, and I've done, I could point to fifty different things I've zoned around here. So I understand the mentality here, and I, I certainly understand how it relates to drive-throughs, and I know, know that that isn't, can be a touch point. But I'll at least hope you recognize that we have in every way tried to address the issues that are, that I think the city finds with, with, uh, these drive-throughs, right? You know, we, we have made sure that there's no direct access from the main road. We've made sure that all of the activities happening behind the scenes where people in the right of way can't see it. We've tried to make sure to maintain the streetscapes and make sure there's no interruption there. So again, we've, we, we really tried to, to distinguish this from your typical drive-through and make it fit with, with, I think, what we, what we want to see in this area. So. Lastly, I'll mention that Madeline's, uh, went over some conditions. We spent a lot of time working with her on those, and we are in agreement with everything that's presented in terms of the conditions before you tonight. So with that, I think I will stop. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, at this time, we will have, uh, open this up for public comment. Uh, we'll start with, uh, ten minutes for. Oh, yes. Oh, it's already, it's unfinished business. Thank you. Yep. Uh, well, I, I would like to find out. I don't have any sheets. Is there anybody from the public here? Because we would open it up if there is somebody who wants their voice heard, even though we're not required to do so. I don't see hands of any, uh, of any kind on that matter, so we'll go ahead and push forward. Uh, at this time, then, it's appropriate to open it up for, uh, questions and discussions, uh, from the commission. And we'll start, uh, tonight, uh, on my far right with Commissioner Wallach.
I'm not even sure to whom I should address a couple of questions.
I'm not even sure to whom I should address a couple of questions I've got there. They concern the conditions in exhibit D. And, and they may be minor. However, I'm a little bit concerned about the language. Uh, in fourteen, it says contribute up to twenty thousand dollars. It doesn't say contribute twenty thousand dollars, but the presenter said it's twenty thousand. Who determines whether it's up to? Or whether, you know, whether nineteen eight is good enough, seventeen six is good enough, or whether they got to contribute the full twenty.
Um, so I think that depends on the cost of the improvement and that's determined by the Public Works Department.
But we don't know for certain how much the improvement will cost.
No, we don't have the specifics on the pricing. That's, um, one of the, um. Conditions that we would look into more at the land disturbance permit phase, um, where we're doing all of the site improvements. Um, and the cost of that is, is really based on the time. But that's, but these types of conditions, those types of streetscape improvements and street improvements. Um, that's at the discretion of the Public Works Director.
Right, um, my concern is that if we haven't priced the cost of the street improvement. How do we know the twenty thousand is enough for it? And.
I don't think the, yeah, my understanding is that the, the. Contribution is not entirely meant to cover the entire cost, go ahead.
Yeah, then this is sort of a bit of unusual. Um, generally in zoning, we can request, uh, onsite improvements. So anything that's on the site or associated with the development can be done somewhat easily. So the streetscape improvements, they're entirely the burden of, of the applicant adjacent to the site. This one happens to be offsite, um, and there we don't have the, the, the right nexus for it. But in this case, the applicant has, uh, agreed, uh, for, uh, in. A contribution of up to twenty thousand dollars. Um, it's not something that will, is guaranteed to happen, but it, it is sort of. It is, we have to be careful with the language here, um, because it's not something that we can. Uh, that we can require without, uh, consent of the applicants.
Okay, it, it may be to look for a different way to phrase it. Uh, there, it, there doesn't seem to be from, from my reading of it.
And the, the way, if I could add one more thing, that the way it will work, sort of if the cost comes out as fifteen thousand. It would come entirely out of the applicant's pockets. If it ends up being twenty five thousand dollars. Then, um, it would be twenty thousand dollars from the applicant and five thousand dollars. That the Public Works Director would need to find in this budget.
Without being critical, it would be perhaps better if it were phrased. That they would, they would pay the entire cost of it up to twenty thousand dollars. Or the cost of it for no more than twenty thousand dollars. Because the way it is written, there is a discretionary. Element involved and it's not clear at whose discretion it is.
And we can, uh, we can jointly with, um, between the applicant and our team, we can take a look at this. Prior to the city council meeting and, and adjust the wording. So it's crystal clear.
And perhaps my other concern is also in the, uh, way of language. But in condition twenty eight. See what my note says here. It says something about temporary closures of limited duration. If it's temporary, of course it's of limited duration, but we have no definition. For what any of those terms mean. You know, um, if it's six months, it's temporary, it's of limited duration. But it is way too vague and you are potentially. Buying yourself an argument over what is temporary and what is limited duration. I, I, I think there ought to be, um, a much clearer definition of what's contemplated here. Those are really my only two comments.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Edmondson.
Um, Madeline, you can probably answer these questions. Um. I guess I heard thirty three parking spaces as part of this, but I'm trying to understand where they are, um, on there. Can you help me understand that?
Yeah, so there's, um, the service parking lot, um, and if you look at the, um, site plan on the right. Um, you can see that they're all sort of programmed in between the two commercial developments, um. On the front of the property and then you have the parking deck and the future multifamily to the rear. So all of the service parking is, is in that, um, area between the buildings. And then the parking garage handles all of the decked parking. Um, we differentiate between surface parking and decked parking because. In our code, we have a maximum amount of surface parking that's allowed, but we don't have a maximum for decked parking. Um, and the goal of that is to eventually really encourage. A lot of the parking, especially in the perimeter center area to be decked and to really limit surface, um, parking. Their proposed surface parking is more spaces than was previously proposed. Um, under the old site plan, um, but the proposed amount of surface parking is still less than the maximum. Um, allowed.
Okay, that's helpful. And then I, I think I just need you to help me get clear on the phasing. Because what I'm getting at here and why, why I'm asking these questions is. It's not thirty three spaces until that garage is built.
So they would have to have the garage built before the, so phase one would be. Two commercial buildings, the service parking lot and three stories of the parking deck.
Okay.
And that parking deck would need to be completed. Uh, the three stories of the parking deck would need to be completed before the commercial and retail, um, would be allowed to open. Um, that's part of the conditions. It's also just from a practical standpoint, um. That's why I was asking. Businesses wouldn't want to open up without the parking deck.
Okay. And then I guess the, this is a question for the applicant, um. How long do people typically spend in the service lane?
I think, I don't know if I know the answer to that. You're about waiting for their, their pickup?
Yeah.
I, I don't know the answer to that. Uh, you know, there are different ways to order. You can order online. I suspect if you do that and show up. Your, your order is rather ready quicker than otherwise, but I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, um, well.
I'll tell you this much, they're, they're not, they're not starting hot beef sandwiches from scratch. I mean, that beef is already prepared. You know, they're cutting the bread. They're slapping it together. So it's not like they're sitting there, you're sitting there waiting for them to cook a steak.
Okay, I guess I'm asking because I see. One lane with an express lane, right? Which I'm assuming goes around so that people can park. Um, and so I'm just wondering if, how long that actually takes, right? From a backup perspective? Because if it's only one lane and I ordered online, I'd still probably be behind you if you didn't order online, right? So how is that going to work?
Yeah, it's two lanes. It, it doesn't show as well on this, but so, uh, we've got at least twelve stacking spaces from basically the door where you stop. Back to the end of the driveway. The bypass lane is the second lane. So the, 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 the lane where the people will wait for their food is on the, the south lane. You'll notice the words bypass lane, there's sort of a line to the left of it. That separates the two lanes. And as I mentioned before, you know, your food comes out when it's ready. And if you're fifth in line and they hand you your food, you can pull the bypass lane and get out. That's the idea.
Okay, so then if I'm parking, I'm not going through either of those lanes. I'm going into the surface parking to park there. To walk across the lanes in order to get into the restaurant?
Correct, but that's the way it is in every, I mean, you go to McDonald's or any restaurant, you're going to cross some kind of driveway. There'll be a, there'll, there'll be a pedestrian. Uh, designated area to cross there, but yeah, you have to do that. And there are a lot of ways, I mean, there, it doesn't show well on here. You can see a sidewalk on the north side of that sort of island with the parking in it. There, there are different ways to get in and out of that site, but you're going to cross the driveway, but that's, I mean, I crossed the driveway to walk in this building.
Okay. Um, and do you have any idea? I think at some point I saw T-Mobile put in the retail, but do you have any?
We took that out. I think I'm not sure why that was there.
No, me neither, but I was just curious if you had any, um, like we know who the restaurant is, but if you had any ideas for that.
What I know is that Portillo's will have restrictions on who can't go there. So it's not going to be another restaurant. It could be a coffee shop. It might be a bakery. But it has to be a business that doesn't conflict with theirs. So there, there are a list of, of users that can go.
Okay. Um, that is it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Shin.
I have some questions for Madeline. So condition twenty seven, staff condition twenty seven talks about having, uh, requesting residential above the parking deck. Would that also be multifamily fifty five plus?
Yeah, so under the current proposal, um, that is not changing. So the, um. Anything that goes above the deck and whatever sort of multi-story building they build on the back half of that. Currently, it would be required to be fifty five plus multifamily.
Okay, thank you. And can you remind us, um, from like the motions we'll have to make? This is both a rezoning case and a SLUP case. So what's involved in the different motions?
Um, so you would, um, just approve the rezoning subject to, um, you know, conditions if you have. You, you can make it subject to staff conditions. If you have any conditions you would want to change from staff conditions, you would want to clarify that in your motion. Um, so you would make a motion for the rezoning and then you can make a motion for the special land use permit.
And the SLUP only pertains to the drive through?
So the special land use permit, uh, pertains to all of the special land use permits that were previously approved. Plus the, um, new drive through.
And the rezoning remind me of the change from the previous case?
So that would just be from PC two to PC two with like updated conditions.
Okay.
Yeah. So the zoning district isn't changing, but the conditions of that, uh, zoning district are changing.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Mr. Brown?
All right, um, Madeline, if you don't. My questions are mostly for you. Um, just following on Elizabeth's question, the, um. The, so the, the SLUP is obviously for the drive through. The rezoning is for the conditions plus. Ch- just changes to the site plan. There's no changes in uses. From what the previous, previously approved application was.
For the, for the fourteens, for the maximum fourteen story multifamily building, that's not changing.
Right.
Um, you know, it's still retail, um, along the front half. So those uses aren't changing, the.
And then we're taking one away, right?
Little tacked on use that's.
Okay.
Addressed by the special land use permit.
All right. But by and large, no changes to, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. And then the, the, kind of the staff, uh, on, on the rezoning solely, the staff's not recommending approval is. You feel that there's a significant downgrade, I guess, in the urban, urban form. From the previously approved application to the current one, is that?
Yeah, I mean.
In a nutshell.
It, it is sort of a, a, a much different product from, you know, in, in staff's perspective from what was previously approved and. Uh, and just in general, we don't view these types of, um, you know, car oriented uses as appropriate. In this area and not really aligning with that vision that we want to see along Ashford Dunwoody Road, especially in, um. You know, um, especially in, in this area, um, where it really is, um. Like I said, part of that edge city vision for that city node, um, the city node is more geared towards, um. Uh, like five to eight story type buildings, a lot sort of different kind of development than like a drive through. Um, restaurant use. We see that as, as conflicting visions.
As, as far as the frontage on Ashford Dunwoody, we're really going from. Uh, I guess it's the same number of stories, right? Uh, on the Portillo side, it's one, but.
Have a two story facade.
Two story height.
Right.
And then the other building that was, was three and remains at three, is that correct?
It's proposed at two. But it was previously proved to go up to three.
Okay. And then the only other difference is you're kind of breaking up the building from one.
The building.
Kind of monolith to kind of breaking it up with the walkway in between.
Yeah, it's, it's broken up, um, along Ashford Dunwoody into two buildings. And then let me pull up the. Site plan and then where the, um. Like green space, the new proposed green spaces and that parking area there. Um, that is taking the place of, you know, there was formerly, um, part of a building there. Um, so, and then behind that is the future multifamily. So it's. Replaced one part of that building with parking lot and open space, broken up the front, um. You know, of Ashford Dunwoody into two pieces and then that multifamily piece in the back still remains.
Okay. Um, uh, while we're on the site plan, it looks like on the northeast, is that? Is that a newly proposed trail or that's like a stub trail that connects to whatever's proposed along perimeter center east?
That was part of the previous, um, approval. Um, that sort of area is in place for future connectivity.
Okay. And then the, if I'm understanding the site plan correct, the semi pervy, pervious area that's kind of in that orange brown. Those are just aesthetic treatments, right? This is not like the one between the parking garage and the surface garage. That's not above. Where the driveway would be, right? That's just showing.
The applicant, this site plan does propose pervious pavers. Now the location of those pervious pavers, you know, that, that's something that, um, you know, the final location of those would be determined. Uh, as part of a land disturbance permit.
Sure.
Phase, um, just because all of that needs to be in a very detailed way engineered.
Oh, no, I, I. Got that. I was just trying to make sure that I wasn't interpreting it wrong. It almost looked like that was above where the driveway would be, but. I don't think that's, okay, it's just a change in material.
Correct.
Okay. Um, my last question is just about the, uh, drive through special land use permit. Um, the applicant talked about. How it's kind of drive through, but kind of not a drive through. It's more like a carry, a carry out situation. Um, and that's with the consideration that it would be a Portillo's. We're obviously not approving a Portillo's. That's just what's being proposed. If say it were another restaurant that were to occupy that space. Um, does that, are there any triggers or conditions that are based on the type of? Restaurant or what type, what restaurant is in that space?
So the, you know, proposed, uh, you know, operation of the drive through, um. Is, you know, it still meets our definition of a drive through, which is why it's required to go through a special land use permit process. We can't really tie the, the plan to a specific tenant. Um, and, you know, I can't really imagine necessarily a way to, um. Control necessarily the operations of a drive through. That's really based on these specific tenants of how they operate them. Um, and so whatever tenant comes in there is going to have their own operation.
Right, I'm just, uh, what I see here, it's kind of internal and what the applicant has stated doesn't seem that bad to me. But I wouldn't want to see a Burger King go, come in with a double drive through or a Chick-fil-A and then we've got a whole different. Situation on, on our head.
I completely understand. I've been thinking a lot about how to avoid that and there is a way to do it. Uh, you could put a condition that's not specific to a restaurant, but you know, any restaurant on the property has to be, you know, four thousand seven hundred sixty one square feet. Has to have a sixteen hundred square foot patio as shown on the site plan. And has to derive less than half of its revenue out of the drive through window. And there, there, there are parameters like that that you could put on. That would be so specific to what we're trying to do here that Burger King can't come through and meet it. So I, I, we are open to that and that's something we could, we've not really talked about with staff. This issue of maybe somebody else coming in is not in our orbit, but I saw the staff report. If there's something we need to do to tighten that up, we're happy to do it. Cause we don't want Burger King inside.
Yeah, I mean, I think that'd be great if staff could work with you on something like that. Cause I, I mean, I'm not being. I'm trying not to be snobbery about what goes in and what isn't, but I'm concerned. Cause I know other places like at Chick-fil-A, for instance, it's going to drive tons and tons of traffic, whereas I think something like this. You're not going to see quite as much because a lot of people are going to dine in.
Right, we'll be happy to work on that for sure.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cameron.
Um, I just have a couple. Madeline, could you, I, I saw the, um, and I know the Edge City has nodes. Could you explain? Could you explain a little bit more what the city node envisions, please?
Yeah, so within the Edge City, um, two point O, um, visioning document, I don't know how familiar y'all are with that. But it specifies three different nodes. There's an urban node, a city node, and a town node. Um, so the urban node is focused around the perimeter mall and the Dunwoodie Marta Station. And that is more in line with like the development that's happening at, at the State Farm property. That's more the urban node, the sort of transit-oriented development. And then the city node is a slight step down from that in terms of intensity. Um, that's looking at more sort of like mid-rise development, five to eight stories, larger focus on residential and office, um, with, um, uh, smaller focus on retail. Um, and then you have the town node, um, which is, um, more of, as even smaller sort of step down in terms of density and scale. Um, and the town node, so the city node is more the perimeter center east area. Um, you know, when you look at sort of the mid-rise apartments and offices that they have over there. And then the town node is maybe more focused towards something like Ashford Lane, um, where it is sort of lower density type commercial, um, and retail development at a smaller scale. So those are the three different nodes, and this one sits in the city node.
And is the primary issue that the, that staff has with the rezoning for the multifamily residential, is that the building is too high for the city node or?
So we don't necessarily have, um, an issue with the multifamily residential. Our analysis was focused on, um, the special land use permit, um, for the drive-through and the scale of that. Um, we just don't feel it's an appropriate scale within the city node and an appropriate use within what we're trying to encourage in that area and what we envision for it.
Okay, thanks. I have a couple of questions for the applicant, please. Um, the increased parking surface spaces, could some of those be eliminated, given that you've got the hundreds of spaces in the parking deck?
My understanding is that Portillo's has a requirement that there be a certain number of parking spaces, just like Publix did down the street. I don't know if there's any flexibility, but maybe we could shave off one or two, but for the most part, that's what they've asked for.
And Portillo's requirement includes the, um, spaces that are over near the retail as well? And can't include the parking deck spaces, is that right?
I, I think to some extent, the spaces to the north are also designed to serve the, the retail building at the corner.
Do you have any, um, interested parties in the retail at this point?
Are there names you can say? You want?
That's, I, I'm not asking for any confidentiality breaches or anything like that.
You want to talk about the types of users? Can you talk about that?
Oh, well, they're generally.
Say your name and address.
Hi, good evening. John Di Giovanni, uh, Fifty Biscayne Drive, Atlanta, three oh three oh nine. Um, there are, uh, a number of users that are interested in the, uh, in the retail corner. Uh, however, Portillo's is now under LOI, and they have restrictions, uh, to eliminate any competition that they would normally have. And so, uh, we feel that actually helps with the traffic. Uh, and the design here is really driven by their use. And so, uh, and that's what predicated the, the parking, uh, surface parking lot as you see it.
And, uh, do you have interested parties in the multifamily building?
No, we do not. That's one of the issues that, um, uh, where we're at today. We've been doing this for about four years now, uh, under the current zoning approval, and it is, it is been unworkable. Uh, there is no capital, uh, for that use. There is interest and available capital for the retail, which will help us prolong our search, our timeline, so that we can find a suitable user for, for the multifamily. A- as you know, uh, uh, the economy and conditions have changed rapidly after the four, uh, in the last four years from the, um, from COVID to the interest rates and to other conditions that, that simply came, some of that came out of left field. I, I mean, we just were not prepared for it, and as you know, the office market took, took a brunt of that hit, um, with COVID. But many of the other uses, retail and multifamily, also were, were, um, affected by it. The, the retail, in our estimation, will not be a problem, which is why we're putting forth this plan to phase the project. We can get out of the ground with the retail, which will help us bring attention to the site and some other users that maybe will look at the multifamily or developers or partners that will look at the multifamily a second or third time and say, okay, well, now that you've got this activity, it makes more sense for us. But, um, the way it stands right now, the, the zoning conditions are just unworkable. And we've spent four years and a lot of money, um, to try to get the vision that both the city wanted and we wanted. But the market has told us that it's just not going to happen.
And my final question for you is, can you show on the, um, site plan where the roundabout is going to be? Is it, it's not at the Y?
It's, it's up here. Do you see my cursor?
Yeah.
So it, it will serve this driveway, and I believe it's actually in PCE. I haven't seen a design. It was a, a, an idea of Michael Smith's. It was important to him, and so we've agreed to do it. But, uh, my understanding is it's up there, page north, just outside of that full access driveway.
Um, how long is, how long has the bank building been vacant?
Quite a long time. We're, we're not the first to try to develop this site.
All right, thanks.
It's been out there a long time.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moss?
Yeah, um, most of my questions have been answered, but I did have a question about the, the fence that you were talking about that would be blocking the drive-through. Can you point, can you explain a little bit more where that fence?
So it's, it's, it's a wall.
Or a wall.
Back to my conceptual image of a park. So if you see here, this is a little grass area fronting a streetscape and right of way. On the left side of the page, you'll notice a concrete wall. It's not easy to see. It's not a focal point, but behind, you see the woman on the bench there on the left side of the page?
Yeah.
Behind her is a concrete wall, and you can kind of follow that outline along, uh, the left side of that, that image. That's what we're thinking. We're open to any ideas there, by the way, but the idea is to put something there that will help do, we're trying to do on Asher Dunwoody, which is screen what's going on internal of the site. So that's, that's was our proposal, and I think it.
Well, we could use hedges.
There are a lot of things we could do, but something there to, to block the view.
And again, that's from the Ashford Dunwoodie Road side?
No, no, this is, this, so imagine that's perimeter center east, so let me go back to my site plan here. So the area that we were just talking about, the wall, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
So this is the park space that I was talking about. It fronts perimeter center east, and the streetscape are proposing for it. The wall would be somewhere back here to shield this parking area and what's going on the site. And of course, we're using the buildings along Ashford Dunwoodie to shield, uh, what's happening, uh, on the west side.
Okay, and the picture that you had of the restaurant, that frontage would be facing Ashford Dunwoodie?
Yeah, this is again conceptual. We, we, what we're waiting on Portillo's to give us is a, a plan that really fits the site. But this has, uh, outdoor dining space, which will front Asher Dunwoodie Road and the facade of the building, which will front Asher Dunwoodie Woods. So it, it's, if you're standing on the sidewalk, it's going to look like every other, you know, nicer restaurant with an outdoor patio. That's what you'll see.
Okay, and, um, since like, and most of my questions were answered already, um, where the drive-through, uh, piece is in the back, you said there, there's no window back there, correct? Uh, that, that, is that something where they, the, the servers would come in and out of the doorway?
There's a door.
So, so if this were to pass and, and you put a provision, there would be no windows back there, you prevent, possibly prevent other vendors possibly from coming inside there.
With that, there is.
That there's no window.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point.
Window per se, so they walk in and out of the door.
Yeah, so we were talking about ways to tie this down to, to really focus on the shoes and not having a delivery window. I think, I think we could work with that.
Okay. Um, last thing on the future development, and, and, and again, I'm new to this, uh, this issue, so I'm a little bit behind it per se. But with the future developments, um, i- is there anything tied to the future developments, timeframes, anything such as that? And, and I understand that once you get the retail in place, we're, we're kind of hoping that we get more interest in the site. Um, I, I guess, uh, the easiest way to say it is, what is Plan B? If we don't have anybody that's ready to come in and develop the remaining pieces, we have a three-story parking deck, and we have some retail there. So we've got a lot of parking space and no interest in, in developments, and that may be something for, uh, somebody else to answer. Um, but that would be my, that's my last question.
Well, I, I, I think after four years, the hope is that by creating energy and activity on the site, that it'll happen. I mean, I, we, I, we know Dunwoodie wants stacked flat senior product, right? We know it. That's how we got here four years ago. What this development we're talking about tonight will do is extend the runway to let us keep searching for that. And you, you know how it is, I mean, you know, seniors out of favor from a funding standpoint today, two years from now, it might be the hottest thing in America. So we're hopeful that with more time, we can get there. I pulled up an image, by the way, of, 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 of phase one, because I want you guys to see that although the parking deck is three stories, the top level will be at grade, so you're not going to be staring at a big monolith for the, whatever time it takes to bring the seniors in, you're going to be looking at what looks like a surface parking lot. The, 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 the levels will be below grade. That makes sense. Floors one and two are going to be below the ground. Oops. Sure what happened there. This is probably the better image.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, very good. I've got a, uh, mo- most of my questions are answered, but I've got a few, and they're gonna, they're gonna run to both folks. Uh, if I could talk to staff first, please. Any grant of this SLUP for a drive-through runs with the land?
That's correct.
Okay. Does it run with the land in the exact form we prescribe, or should the tenant leave? Would they have to occupy the space exactly as it exists when they leave? Tell, tell me a little bit about that nuance, if you please.
Yeah, so, um, it's tied to the approved conditions and tied to the site plan. So whoever moves into these buildings, um, whoever wants to utilize that drive-through is going to be tied to, you know, whatever parameters are put in place, they would have to fit into that.
Okay, so the discussion then regarding keying some of these additional limitations into uh, a location like, uh, like the restaurant that's being proposed i- is a potential meaningful deterrent to folks that aren't this restaurant. It, it runs with the land, so should Portillo's go elsewhere? If we, you know, say they need a, a delivery door and not a window, or we say they need, uh, half the revenue, less than half the revenue from that, that would, that would adhere, that would bind future occupants of that land. A- a- absent a different secondary SLUP process.
Correct.
Okay. Does the conversion to a door-style delivery as opposed to a out-the-window delivery change the definition of that structure from drive-through? Or does that still meet the conditions or the, the description, legal description of a drive-through?
The way the drive-through use, uh, is defined in our code is not based on the delivery system. It's sort of based on the stacking of the cars. So if the cars are stacking up to receive the service, that's what makes it a drive-through. It's not necessarily the window, um, so you would need to, or window or door. So if you wanted to tie it to that door service, I would encourage you to sort of make a, an amended condition um, for that specifically. Or, you know, prior to the city council meeting, you know, we can definitely work with the applicant to, um, write up the specifics of that condition.
But a door delivery still would meet our drive-through definition. Okay, okay. Uh, few questions, uh, for the applicant, please. I, I know we have touched on this, but I want to understand if I might trouble you to go back to that site plan. All right, perfect. Uh, thank you for driving home the fact that the top of that three-story garage is at grade. Take me through the journey that somebody who parks on that top level with your mouse, if you can, or take me through the journey that, that a parker would go through to, to go dine at the restaurant or shop at the retail space that you're talking about. What's the, what do you guys see that being?
So let's say you park, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Let's say you park right here. There's a stairwell right there to the left. Come out the stairwell, there's a crosswalk across the driveway.
Well, that cross, and I'm going to stop you along the way, because I want to, I want to talk about this, because there's some items of significance to me here. Okay, we're, we're potentially crossing where most of the traffic is going to come in and out of that complex in your, in your vision, is that correct?
I, I mean, I think a lot will, but I, I, I think if I've been to the property and I know my way around, I'm going to go into the easternmost, because it's, goes straight to the deck. But I, I don't know.
But we've got two-way traffic, and everybody who's utilizing the food or that service park, you're coming in and out of there.
Correct.
Okay, is there any, is there any speed abatement there or anything designed to protect the pedestrians?
Well, we haven't really talked about that, but we could put a ra- a, you know, a table or a raised, uh, crosswalk, if that is, is where you're heading.
Well, well, let's, let's keep walking and see where we go.
So that cross, and, and by the way, this isn't the only way. I just picked one parking spot. We've got stairwells in, in the corners here. But, so you, you come out of the bottom of the stairwell, you cross over what may be a raised crosswalk to, uh, uh, which also serves as a speed table. And you'll see the sidewalk network here. You can take that sidewalk all the way between those two parking areas here to the courtyard and come in the front of the restaurant. And by the way, you can also see a connection from the sidewalk here. So if you're coming in off the Asher Dunwoodie side, you have a similar entry way, straight from the sidewalk into the courtyard into the building.
And am I seeing correctly that that roadway between the two parking lots, you were just on it slightly to your, right there? That will be strictly one-way?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
That's really to get the curbside folks off, off the property, and that, that's, that's, that's a main reason.
Okay, and yeah, I guess my, my same concern about safety, I mean, we, we as a body could address this if we're going that direction, kind of centers on that sidewalk that crosses the, the two lanes of traffic there, right before making your way over there. Um, you know, folks get their food or folks realize they didn't mean to be in the, uh, in the restaurant lane, and they're going to whip on out of there and get on out. I, you know, have concerns about the speed of traffic and the, you know, again, the reason we are chilled against, uh, you know, drive-throughs is safe for pedestrians and, you know, protecting pedestrian safety, I think, would be, would be significant. The other question is, uh, on that parking garage, and I'm looking at the lower left, as I look at it, of the parking garage, I see an in-and-out on the lower left, that would be the, the, the south, southwestern quarter of the parking garage. Um, are we anticipating any traffic, uh, uh, problems getting in and out of that garage there?
No, and I'm trying to go to this plan. I think when you enter, and John may be better at answering this than I do, you come in and you go down, I think is, and circle down to the, the lower two floors. There, i- it's like every other parking deck. I mean, there's segregated traffic, one lane or one, one ramp goes up, one, one ramp comes down.
So we don't have problems getting out of that lot in that southwest corner of the lot? If there happens to be a backup there at the, at the drive-through lane?
No, and, and you've got other options, so, so just, so if you look at this corner here, this driveway comes directly into the deck. So I suspect that most of the folks who are coming out of this deck are actually to come out this exit and go straight up to perimeter center east, because there's a full access turn there and our mini roundabout.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah. Okay, uh, I think that'll do it for my questions at this time. Thank you. Oh, uh, excuse me. Yeah, we, we have some additional questions, some follow-up. Is that Commissioner Wall or Commissioner Edmondson or both?
Right. How many spaces are contemplated in the parking garage?
Three hundred and forty.
Okay, and how many people does the restaurant seat?
I don't know the answer to that. The, the way that parking is calculated according to IT is typically by square footage. You can do it by seats, or you can do it by square footage, and we, we, we're working off the square footage.
Okay, well, what I'm, let me kind of tell you where I'm headed with the, my concern, rather than kind of beating around the bush. If you, you only get it first, the retail and the restaurant, you may end up, I mean, people are probably likely to park on the top or the middle level.
Right.
Okay. You may have this whole kind of vacant reared space down below that's not observable. And just as Commissioner O'Brien, or Chairman O'Brien was talking about, the safety of the pedestrians up in the parking lot, this is causing me to start to wonder about the safety in the lower two levels, not observable From the street level of the parking garage if they're not being used much. And that's why I started out by asking how many people the restaurant seats. And how many spaces are contemplated? Because if. If some of the parking garage is contemplated to be for the eventual senior housing, then it's. Overcapacity.
We're, we're going to be adding floors for the senior. So, so if you go back to the conditions. Uh, we are required to. I forget, hold on a second. We're over designing that parking garage because they're going to add levels once the multifamily comes in. So we'll add two more levels of parking above this existing deck. And a structure and, and all of that is covered. In condition twenty six. Let me read this to you. Uh, the applicant shall construct the first three levels of the parking as part of phase one. The initial levels of parking garage shall be designed and constructed to accommodate a minimum load of. Two additional levels of parking. And a minimum seventy five foot residential structure above. The applicant shall provide a signed and sealed letter from a structural engineer that confirms the maximum load bearing capacity of the parking deck as part of the construction permit application. The height of any structure to be constructed on top of the parking garage should be capped by the maximum load bearing capacity of the parking garage. As confirmed by the structural engineer and may exceed seventy five feet above the parking deck, but under no circumstances, or under no circumstances will exceed. Uh, fourteen stories or a hundred and eighty feet. So we, we, we're, we're over designing to build on top of it later.
I had read that.
Okay.
Okay, and I've perhaps phrased the question poorly.
Okay, sorry.
If there are three hundred and forty parking spaces and there's only something like a hundred and forty guests. In the restaurant and, uh, Commissioner Ed, Edmanson just looked that up somewhere. And let's also assume just to give it. Everything we possibly can, there's another. Seventy people in the retail. Okay, even if we assume that every single guest in the restaurant and the seventy people in retail. Came in separate cars. Then you've still got. A big gap between the available spaces. In phase one. And. The need for them. And so when I, just as you're over designing, and that's great. And you're actually building part of this parking garage in contemplation of the further development. Great respectable thing. Until you've got that, you've got this large vacant floor of the parking garage. And I'm asking about, I mean, it's a liability concern for the owner of the property, of course. But it's also a safety concern for the users. And I'm asking if there's anything contemplated. In terms of monitoring the parking garage or, or looking out so that the. Bottom floor of the parking garage in particular doesn't become blighted. And, and people get into it just as we've learned that there's been that kind of problem. At the vacant bank, bank building. Okay?
John wants to address that, I'll help.
Yeah, so I, I understand. So the three hundred and forty spaces are the total parking deck with all levels constructed. The first phase is only going to have roughly two hundred parking spaces. So, so it's going to be, um, and seventy of those spaces are dedicated to Portillo's. So, uh, and then the rest will be, it is overbuilt in terms of number of spaces because. You can't like build half a deck.
Right, right, right.
Right, so, so, uh, of the two hundred, uh, seventy will go to Portillo's, there'll be about forty to the regular retail. So we have about a hundred or ninety or so extra spaces. And normally we have someone patrolling the parking deck. In those cases, or we have, uh, surveillance equipment in those parking decks. Uh, it will be, um. It will be a ticket. Parking deck, so you can't just drive in and out. So you're going to go in and you're there for two hours, uh, free. And then like most, most parking decks you see in Midtown or Buckhead. And then, uh, after that, there'll be some small charge that goes along with it. So it'll be a controlled access environment.
Okay, is there, uh? If this body were to wish to impose a condition that it either be. That there. Had to be a security person mon, uh. Patrolling within it or electronic control. Would that be acceptable to the applicant?
Yeah, some form of that would be because we intend to do that.
Okay, any, uh, further commission questions? All right, well, at this time, uh. Why don't we go ahead and see what the, uh, will of the body is? Uh, anybody have any thoughts on, uh? Moving forward, uh, staff has made their position known, but they've also given us a. Path forward and we've also kind of explored some additional potential. Uh, opportunities for us to, uh. Further address some of the concerns at least. And so that may be the will of the body as well. Does anybody want to? Take a swing at a motion and it may take us a couple of tries here. And as I believe Commissioner Shin had confirmed. We're going to look at this as, uh, two motions. One is the rezoning, which has nothing to do with. The drive through, correct? And the second is the slop, which does include the drive through.
Uh, I would recommend strongly, um, to not break these apart too far, um. Because the reason the rezoning is before you all is to change the site plan. So we might get into trouble if we approve something widely divergent, you know, where we have a slop with this site plan. And then we have a zoning with a different site plan until it doesn't match. So I would recommend, um. Uh, finding a way to approve or recommend approval to both in unison or recommend denial to both in unison.
Okay, and, and that's fine. I'm not sure that any of us have strong feelings about that. I think from the message we received earlier. Was that they were separate and discreet, but all right, having heard that team, uh. What's the pleasure of the group? Commissioner Edmondson.
I can give it a go.
Okay.
All right, um, I would move to. Approve, uh, R Z twenty five oh five. Um, along with slept twenty five oh four with staff conditions applied. Along with three additional conditions. The first condition would be the inclusion of a raised cross, crosswalk connecting the path to the garage. The second condition would be, um. Door delivery requirement tied to the slop to ensure. Uh, that proper use of the drive through lanes. And the third being. Security monitoring requirements, uh, within the parking garage. That's it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve subject to staff conditions, raised crosswalk to the garage, uh, door delivery requirement. And, uh. What was it? Secure, uh?
Security monitoring within the, uh, parking garage.
Okay, security monitoring in the garage. All right. Uh, having, having heard that motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Can we add a different, another condition?
Uh, well, we're, we're right now, we're, we'll, we'll take the second. And if there is no second, then we can reform the motion to try again.
Okay.
So, uh, is there, is there a second at this time? Okay, not having heard a second, uh, we can start again. And are, is your starting point? Commissioner Edmondson's criteria, plus you wish to add something?
Right. With, uh, Jackie's conditions plus another condition for the special land use permit. That. A limitation of fifty percent of revenue from the drive through window. Be placed upon whatever. Restaurant is going into that space.
To, to put a point on that, no more than fifty percent of the site revenue can come from the drive through.
Correct.
Okay.
Which I think is what the applicant mentioned.
Okay, all right. So now we've got, we've got a, a motion that is, uh, substantially similar to Commissioner Edmondson with the additional limitation. That no more than fifty percent of the revenue might come from the drive through. Having heard that motion. Uh, thanks to Commissioner Cameron by way of Commissioner Edmondson, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Brown seconds. Got a motion and a second, uh, at this time. Uh, it's appropriate to debate, discuss, ask questions. Is there any?
I guess, um, Commissioner Cameron, can you help me understand why? You want to do the fifty percent limitation if we already have a limitation for the door only?
I just think, I just think it's an extra. Limitation. Because who, in the future, like, who knows what the door looks like? I mean, you know, stuff changes. Exactly. So I just feel like that's another. Will keep the drive through traffic limited. As. Uh, which is what I think we're, we're trying to do. I mean, I've, I want the site to be developed. I mean, it's been vacant. That I saw. We're trying to improve the look of that area. That was just, that was my thought.
Mr. Cameron, I have a question. Do you? Do you mean fifty percent of all revenue or fifty percent of the food revenue? Because there won't be. Alcohol sales off property. And that would artificially inflate. The, um. In store revenue. Such that. The. It, it could still be that a, a, a more than fifty percent of the food is going into the parking spaces. But. Because there's alcohol included inside. You, you, you see what I'm getting at?
But I think we're trying to avoid a Chick-fil-A type situation because some of them do have doors. No, I know. Instead of windows, but they don't serve alcohol at Chick-fil-A. So putting that fifty percent stipulation is trying to guard us from. A Chick-fil-A or Burger King.
No, I, I agree with that. What, what I'm, what I'm getting at is a substantial portion. Of the revenue from inside. Maybe. Alcohol. Okay, and so when you say fifty percent of revenue. And you don't say fifty percent of food revenue, you can make up a substantial portion of the revenue. With the alcohol such that it tilts the fifty fifty. Division.
Are you suggesting that, that by refining it further, you're making it that much more difficult to game the system?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Still limit the fifty percent revenue to food revenue?
Right.
Okay. Make that amendment.
Got a motion and a second, uh. So we're going to have to vote on that, but, uh.
I can't say what I meant was.
Well, again, we can, we can Roberts rules this to death and I'm certainly not the foremost expert. But why, why don't we, i- if, if it's the will of the body, let's go ahead and unless there's more discussion on this specific motion. Let's hold a, uh, let's hold a vote on that specific motion. If it carries, great. If it fails, we can take another swing at it. Any other discussion? All right, uh, hearing none, all in favor of the motion as it has been, uh, vocalized, motioned and seconded. Uh, all opposed, like sign? Okay, motion fails. Would somebody care to, uh, form another motion?
Okay, same motion, except say that. Less than fifty percent of food revenue. Can come from the drive through. Or a max. A maximum of fifty percent of food revenue can come from the drive through.
All right, Commissioner Cameron moves. We approve with staff conditions, raising the crosswalk with the door delivery. Uh, securing, uh, the, uh, the parking garage and fifty percent of the revenue. Uh, food revenue specifically. That is the motion that I've heard. Do I, did I restate that correctly? Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Wallach seconds. Hearing a motion of second, is there any further discussion on this? Uh, seeing none, all in favor of passing the motion as, uh, as vocalized, moved and seconded, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign, that carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. It doesn't, my apologies. I'm sorry, I caught you. Out of the side of the corner of my glasses. It does not carry unanimously. Commissioner Shin descends. But the motion does carry. Thank you. My goodness, okay. All right, thank you. Uh, all right.
Saw you, Elizabeth, I caught it. Don't worry.
Thank you. And I'm glad you spoke up. Thanks. Uh, all right, at this time, uh, we'll entertain new business. This is R Z twenty five dash oh six. Forty five hundred North Shallowford Road request to rezone from O I to C one to allow an animal hospital veterinary clinic.
Good evening, planning commission. So forty five hundred, uh, North Shallowford Road requests a resoning from O I to C one for an animal hospital. So a little bit of background on this property, um. This is an older office building that was constructed in nineteen sixty nine. Um, it's in the Georgetown area. Um, if you're familiar with the new Purnashol cart, uh, Purnashol Park, it's essentially catty corner to that. Across, um, the intersection. It's also in the area where they've built that new three story Emory Medical Office Building. Um, this medical office building right now is an Emory building and they're slowly kind of vacating it and moving because they've built that new facility there. So it's on the market, um. Currently. Um, and the, um, applicant is the interested buyer of that property and they would like to operate the Dogwood Veterinary Specialty. An emergency animal hospital within the existing building footprint. So that, um, existing, um, building would remain, um, but other, rather than human medical, it would be dog medical. But, uh, the existing site would remain basically the same as it's oriented right now. Um, they're not proposing any, um, site improvements. Um, and they're not proposing any, any changes, um, to, um, you know, expand the building or anything in that, uh, regard. Um, they're also not proposing any outdoor dog runs. Um, the specific applicant is not asking for. Um, you know, animal boarding or anything of that nature. Um, all of the overnight stays there are due to the nature of the hospital stays. So it's a little, little background on the proposal. As this relates to the rezoning approval criteria, um, we find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, the Georgetown, um, character area does allow for local commercial zoning as well as the O one zoning. Um, but the O one zoning that it is right now is, is a pretty restrictive zoning district. It really only allows for office and medical. It doesn't allow for any animal related uses. Or any sort of retail uses or anything of that nature. Um, and, you know, as you know, this has been a very common theme the past couple of planning commissions is that the office market is really suffering. It's not necessarily something that's economically viable. Um, and you know, for medical uses, like I said, Emory's just made a huge investment in a new medical office building. It's pretty large, it's three stories. So that medical, um, uh. Use is pretty saturated in that area. Um, and so this O I district doesn't really allow anything outside of that. And so in order to open up that prod, property to, to new opportunity, um, you know, we do see a rezoning would be appropriate. Uh, to do that, um. So we would recommend approval of the rezoning, subject to some staff recommendations and I'll walk you through those right now. In terms of physical, um, you know, improvements to the property, Public Works has some, um, path improvements planned for this area. And so we are asking that the applicant in anticipation of that, close the, um. Uh, southern curb cut, that would be the unsignalized access, um, that I've, um, marked with a red circle. Essentially, the Public Works Department is trying to minimize points of contention, um, with the new path that's there. It's part of their access management plan. Um, they're trying to, um. Close unnecessary curb cuts. And then that would leave the access to the property at the signalized entrance, which is also, you know, the safer entrance as well. Um, and that we're also asking them to maintain that, um, interparcial, um, connectivity that they have with the. Um, offices and warehouses to the rear, um, and to, um, formalize that with an easement, a cross asset, access easement. So those are sort of the physical things about, about the property that we're asking for. And in terms of the uses, like I said, we find that the local commercial, um, zoning district is generally appropriate. Um, and opening up this property to new economic opportunity is a good thing. But again, because we are making some future improvements in this area in terms of walkability, we do want to limit those types of car oriented uses. So we are recommending that no vehicle and equipment, sales and service uses be permitted on the subject site. And also as a function of this rezoning, um, this property would be tied to this site plan. And so if anyone ever wanted to come in. And redevelop this site, change the footprint of the building or tear it down and build up something new. Um, it would trigger another rezoning process. So if something bigger were to come along, it is something that would get reviewed. Um, by the planning commission and ultimately the city council. So. So, overall, that's the staff recommendation, um, I know the applicant, um, has a quick presentation prepared for you, so I'll turn over the floor to them, but I am available if you all have any questions.
All right, thank you.
Would you like the tower?
Uh, well, I guess.
And then you'll just talk over the slides. This up and down.
Thank you guys for allowing us to present today and taking the time to look at, uh, the rezoning. Um, I'm that I'm a C, I'm one of the doctors at Dogwood, uh, and one of the owners. Um, with me, we have, uh, Dr. Chen and, uh, Bill, who is helping us with the rezoning, and, uh, Norman, who works with me, and, um, Blue Frog, who will be the contractor for, uh, the renovation that we're planning. Uh, this is the first time I do this, so, uh, hopefully we'll be able to answer all of your questions. Uh, but, um, like, as, uh, Madeline said, and like, we, uh, would like to use the, uh, property as a veterinary clinic. Uh, we only see dogs and cats, and like, uh, Dogwood has another, uh, clinic in Cobb County. Um, we have all grown that property, and like, we have about a hundred, uh, staff members and like twenty doctors. Uh, the reason for a new location for us is because we want to better serve the community. Uh, we would like to add service that we cannot provide at that location, like cardiology, uh, neurology, ophthalmology, and like, uh, to the community. Uh, there are very few clinics that, uh, provide, uh, specialty and ER, uh, care for, for pets, and, uh, we're one of the few of them, and like, and, uh, we would like to grow and help Dunwoody grow as well, and work together with the city, uh, to provide the services. Um, the property used to be an Emory clinic, there's not gonna be more traffic, I would imagine, than like from a, like a human clinic, uh, we are open twenty-four seven, but our pets are usually very sick, and like, so it's not that there's a lot of barking or anything like that. Uh, there's no boarding, and like, except for hospitalized patients. The, there was a, a recommendation that we, to help with amenity for the community, and like, having a cough shop and like in the property might be, uh, something that the community, and like, would need, because there are parts around there. We're open to that, and like, I'm a veterinarian, I'm not a cough shop owner, and like, so we'll see how that pans out, but on our plan, I'll, I have a floor plan, I'll, and like, that has and like space for a cough shop, if that's something that, and like, we would like to go. Uh, right now, the O-one zoning does not allow veterinary use, and like, so that's, we're trying to, um, rezone just so that we could, uh, use as a veterinary clinic. And like, it, right now, the building is vacant, uh, so that would re-vetalize the property and bring business, uh, to the area and provide a service that is much needed, there aren't, there aren't any veterinary specialty ER in Dunwoody, and there isn't a lot in the Atlanta area, and like, in general, so would add a, a huge, uh, service to the community. Initially, in like, we'll start with about forty staff members, and like, uh, and with that, and like about ten doctors, and like in different, in like specialty, uh, or investment for, uh, the inside of, like, um, restructure, it's about three point two million dollars. Uh, on the outside, we'll have, we'll improve the outside by painting, like landscape, better lighting, light. There isn't a lot of changes to the outside, except that we do need a place where we could walk the dogs and like, uh, to go potty. And like, and they already have grass areas on the outside, we, uh, we basically would fence the area so that it's safe for the dogs to go outside, uh, and it's on the backside of the, of the property. Uh, the renovation is about, like, the building is about twenty thousand, we're proposing a sixteen thousand square foot renovation inside. We'll add surgery treatment in like an imaging decline areas. We have a space for a cough shop, if that's what, and like you guys, and we feel that it's a good need for, uh, the community. And then the outside is really, uh, like, uh, upgrades to the outside, except for a little fence, and like, where there is already grass, where the dogs would walk, and like during the day. I think this is more of what the requirements are from us, and like, uh, right now, most of the out, and like, the neighbors are office and, uh, commercial. Uh, so there isn't a lot of, uh, and like, um, residential for now. Um, there's no really huge impact on the infrastructure, and like compared to what it was already there. And like, um, and like, we don't see as many cases as Emory, uh, used to see. Uh, there is no ness, like necessarily environmental impact from, uh, from what we are gonna be doing. Um, and it's consistent with the plans, uh, from Dunwoody. It is, uh, about the sustain, uh, sustainability, we're twenty-four seven veterinary clinic, we already have a location, we know that we're sustainable. Our, our lease is fifteen years, and with, and like, uh, ability to, uh, renew it, and like, so we, we plan on being there for the long run. Uh, the, if everything goes well, and you guys approve the rezoning, uh, or, uh, expected open date is next summer sometime, and like, so it's not something that it's gonna be delayed, and like, we're gonna be able to move pretty fast, and that's what we want to do, uh, and to, and like, getting this vacant property and to, uh, having, and like, uh, a business running out of, out of, out of there. Um, again, no impact, and then the changing condition, it was an Emory clinic, they have already completely moved out of the property now, and like, and so it's just a vacant, uh, property for right now. Uh, this is the floor plan, I don't know if you guys could see it, but, and like, the front is the same as it was, and like, uh, we have exam rooms in the front, and then the hospital in the back, and then if you see on the outside, on the right side, there is, and like, a little ramp. There's the ramp, and then there's the other side, and like that, that's the only change on the outside where we're gonna fence that, uh, there is grass already there. And so we would fence it, uh, so that the ICU patients could go outside and potty outside. Uh, Blue Frog and like, um, and like, we want to make sure, of course, it's a huge investment for us, and like, um, uh, Blue Frog, it's, uh, has twenty years of veterinary experience, and like, that's mostly what they do. Uh, we want to make sure that, and like, we're complying with, and like, the city. Um, and we, and like, it's in our best interest that, and like, the clinic is done in accordance to, uh, and like, the city, and so Blue Frog is also here, if you guys have, have any questions structurally, because they'll be the best, uh, people to answer. Um, and I think, like, this is it for us, and like, uh, we're just requesting respectfully that you guys give us a the approval, we want to work with the city. Uh, and like, or, and can we want to be part of the development and, uh, and provide a service that we feel is much needed.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
All right, at this time, this is new business, so we will have the opportunity for the public to speak for or against, anybody wishing to speak for should step forward now. Anybody wishing to speak against? All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move forward to, uh, commission questions and discussion. Uh, once again, we're gonna start to, uh, to my right, Commissioner Wallach.
I don't really have any question about this proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Redmondson.
I just had one question for, um, the applicant. I was just curious, I know you said, I, I think you said you'd start with about forty staff, ten doctors, and they would all be ready to go by next summer?
I, so. Uh, yes, that's our plan, uh, I hope so, and like, I mean, we have an aggressive business plan, and like, it's an expensive, uh, build-out, and like, uh, yes, uh, we're working really hard to recruit, and like, especially the doctors.
Okay, and, um, I think it is much needed, I think our only competition around here is Blue Pearl, which I unfortunately have to visit often. How is the services there versus what you're offering, is it comparable, can you help me just understand what that looks like?
I'll love to.
Fabulous.
Uh, so we, and like, I have Dr. Chen here, and like, we are, and a close-knit, uh, uh, group of doctors who work very well together. Our goal really is to service the community, and like, uh, we are, we, we started Dogwood, and like, a lot of the doctors are part-owner of Dogwood. We, our goal is to provide a good service, and like, and be proud of what we do, and, and like, and make sure that the quality of care is what we, we, we pride on, and like, and it's, uh, so that's the difference between us and the, and, uh, Blue Pearl. Uh, we're a lot, uh, and like, we, we, we own it, we want to be proud of it. I wo, and like, we live all, and like, here, and like, in Atlanta, or close to Atlanta, and like, our friends come to, to see us, and like, so it's very, uh, a lot more, uh, of a community compared to, uh, like, uh, Blue Pearl.
That's it, that's all.
All right, Mr. Shen.
I just had one question, um, for the applicant. Sorry, getting your stuffs in. Um, one of the staff conditions is to close the, um, driveway that's not signalized, you guys are okay with that, right?
So, uh, we are, if that's what the city would like us to do, I, and like us, and a lame person and a, like a pedestrian, I understand, but when you have, I worry that when you have, um, and like, the, and like, traffic coming in and out, having one exit only might be, and like, might cause a little bit more of a, a issue coming in and out of the property. Um, I would, and like, uh, suggest, if I could, and like, that, and like, to, to leave it open initially, and when the, the pathway for the cycling, because I think that's what you guys want to do, it's in like, uh, a cycling lane there, and like, to close it at a point, and like, if needed, I, I don't know, and like, I will respect whatever, uh, the, uh, the committee, uh, decides. Um, having two entrances is usually better, because, you know, like, the staff could come on that backside and just park on the back, and not, you know, like, crowd the front of the building, and like, and it's almost like, and like, this stuff is gonna come from the back, and like, so that, and like, will be an easier entrance for them, and like, in my opinion, but, and like, uh, we'll respect whatever you guys decide.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
All right, Mr. Brown.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Cameron?
I just have a couple of questions for the applicant, sorry. Are you moving from your Marietta location to here, or are you gonna have two locations then?
We will have two locations, our, uh, ideal scenario, the other location is eleven thousand square foot, and like, this is a twenty thousand. This location will have more services, and like, uh, their only, Blue Pearl has a neurologist, and then the university has a neurologist, and there is another clinic in operator, and like, with a neurology, if you think about the city of Atlanta, that's not enough to service, and like, uh, so we are actually open the second location in addition to the first one, to be able to, uh, have, and like, different services.
So I did a quick Google search, and there are other Dogwoods in the Atlanta area, are they not all affiliated together, are they independently owned?
Yes.
Just curious.
Our clinic, it's only, we only have the clinic in Marietta, yeah.
And then, um, are you buying the building, or is someone else buying it and y'all are renting it?
I'm not buying the building, uh, there is, and like, uh, and like, uh, paraffin partners with, uh, veterinary clinics, and like, because, and like, they, they, they're, and like, a investment, and like, property company. Uh, sometimes they like to buy the properties, and veterinary clinics like that, because they are not gonna pick us out at some point, and like, but, uh, Dogwood is not buying the property if it's sold, and like, if it's decided to sell.
So we're negotiating a fifteen-year lease. And once we're the tenant, with good credit in fifteen years, somebody's probably on about a building, right, and it may be one of those veterinary specialty-type investors. But what we're trying to do is just finalize the lease for fifteen years with options to renew, because, as I said, somebody's gonna be there for thirty.
So this would be a lease with Emory, do they currently?
They, so the owner, these, Emory's leasing, uh, like.
Got it.
Uh, Emory's vacated, I'm, I understand their lease was up end of May, and so the owner, uh, will be leasing to us.
Got it, thank you.
Commissioner Moss?
No questions.
All right, wait, hang on. Saved you a trip. Uh, ju- just so I understand, the services that are gonna be provided onsite are twenty-four-hour emergency services, so there'll be a veterinarian president, present twenty-four hours a day, and then preventive services?
No, we don't, uh, we don't do preventive care, we work with the local veterinarians, and like, and we service, and like, we don't do like vaccines or dentals or space neuter. Uh, we are a referral clinic, and like, for the regular veterinarian, and like, and when they need a specialized service or an emergency, uh, that's where, what we serve, and like, so no, we don't do any, um, uh, preventive care.
Okay, so that would also mean like, like hygiene, cleaning care, would only be incidental to the other care that you're providing, it would not be its own
We'd never.
Business offering?
No, we don't, we don't do that at all, and like, uh, the, like, then, we don't, dentals, and like, uh, we don't do any, like, any routine, um,
Okay.
procedures.
Okay. Uh, that does it for my questions, thank you.
No problem.
All right, uh, at this time, uh, with the board, care to form a motion?
Sure. Um, I'd like to, um, approve RZ twenty-five oh six. Um, the request to rezone from OI to C one to allow for the animal hospital veterinary clinic, um, approved, subject to the conditions set forth by the staff.
Okay, Commissioner Redmondson moves to approve, subject to staff conditions, did I repeat that correctly?
It's correct.
All right, hearing that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Shen, seconds. All right, at this time, we've got a motion on the floor, and a second, is there any debate? All right, I will vote then, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign, and I think we have a unanimous one this time, so, uh, thank you, everybody. All right, uh, at this time, do we have any other business to contemplate? All right, do we have any public here's here to comment? It looks like maybe not. Uh, is there any, uh, commission comment at this time? All right, hearing none of the above, want to just, uh, once again, welcome Commissioner Moss, look forward and work with you, and, uh, we stand adjourned, thank you, everyone.